Ready? Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this Planning Commission of Cattati to order on September the 16th, 2019 at 7:00. Could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner O'Nines? Commissioner McKenney?
Here.
Chair Hancock?
Here.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Could we do the approval of the minutes? Anybody last minutes, August the 19th?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
So have we got any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is no changes to the agenda.
Okay, this is the time when we'll do oral and written communications. Anybody in the public is asked to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to items not already agendized for discussion. It's open for public comment. Anybody want to make a comment? There's some nice people there, nice members of the public listening in, but no comment. So if we could go to matters at hand, and I'll hand over to the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's John Paul Harris. I'm planner with the City of Cattati, and I want to apologize for Noah for not being here, but he is actually presenting on a very interesting topic related to SEQA and how it relates to how planning agencies designate certain properties and projects. At the APA, American Planning Association Conference, California Conference, so it's really lucky him. And so tonight, we have presentation by Jim Carney, who has been the project planner, consultant. Olivia Urban is here, who has been our environmental consultant as well. Craig Scott, Director of Public Works, is here, and Rick Edrencelli, who is also an engineering consultant on this project, is present today. And the applicant, the applicants are here as well. So with that, I will hand it over to Jim, and remain available for questions should you have any for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, JP, members of the commission and chair. As you know, we were here about a month ago, I think it was on August 19th, and you continued this item until tonight. We did do a presentation at that meeting. We need to get our slide show up on the screen here. Thank you, Curry. So I'm going to do a condensed version of what we did at the last meeting. I had about over 20 slides. I have less than that tonight, but I do want to cover the points. I know there were some questions and comments at the last meeting from the public and some of the commissioners, and we'll address those as we go through, and either through my presentation or JP or our environmental consultant, Olivia, will address those as well. So we're here to request preliminary design review and a use permit, rezoning, and lot line adjustment to allow the construction of a new 77,000-square-foot assisted living facility with 88 units, a 21,100-square-foot memory care facility with 34 units, and a 4,000-square-foot commercial building, including all supporting ancillary elements and features. Also, it requires adoption of the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration. And all these discussions are in your packet, and were published and so forth. Just to review again, this is the site in terms of exactly where it is, on the west side of the city limits of Cattati, out Highway 116, Gravenstein Highway, at the corner of Alder, on the northwest corner of Alder. As you recall, just across the street, last month, you approved the project for the Village Project, which has some housing as well as commercial buildings, and that we're just to the east of, or excuse me, yeah, to the east of that is the Lowe's Shopping, the Lowe's Building and a couple of other commercial projects there, and a couple of intervening parcels that have not been developed yet. But this does show the footprint of the senior assisted care, which is the larger, looks like there's two central courts in it, and then the memory care is to the west of that or the left of that. And then the smaller commercial building is front along Highway 116. There is a 30-foot setback there, and we'll get into some other features about that building and the adjoining trellis and sitting area plaza. Just as a view, this is from the Alder Avenue entrance, which is opposite the entrance to the Village Project, just across the street. This is the view from that corner of the intersection of 116 and Alder, looking west or northwest, and you can see the proposed signage at the corner there, and you can also see the trellis. I don't have my pointer going here, but you can see the trellis structure and some seating area plaza there, and beyond that is the commercial building, where there is a cannabis business planning to go in there. It's already been approved. And here's the east view from looking at that commercial building and the frontage So the project is, in terms of the general plan and zoning, we're calling this the Sterling Senior Community and Commercial Project. Townsend is the development organization that's proposed it. It's a project plan conforms with the general plan. It's current site is, or the current site is zone, Commercial Gravenstein Corridor, and the proposed zoning amendment to allow residential care facilities for the elderly with a use permit, and that would affect all of the CG zoning areas within the city to allow additional with a use permit. In terms of the zoning, it's the assisted living use type, includes a parking, the site plan, circulation, et cetera. Use is divided in the code, not currently permitted, as we just mentioned, or I just mentioned. The preliminary design review is essentially what we're doing tonight. We started that somewhat last month on August 19th. It does require a use permit, and the lot line adjustment also is reorienting to lots so that there can be a separate parcel for the commercial building and the rest of the project, memory care and the senior assisted care would be on the other lot. And then the rezoning recommendation, we go to the city council. And by the way, all of, all of the applications will go to the council as the next step. For the SEQA initial study, mitigated declaration, that's been published, had a 30-day review starting June 30th. There were two SEQA comment letters received from Caltrans and California Department of Fish and Wildlife, included the mitigations to ensure that there would be no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and addressed comments, concerns in terms of biological and traffic issues. It was tiered off of what was the original EIR that was adopted in 2001, which does not include this site, but it does include the parcels just to the east of it, so the Village and all the way down to the site where the Lowe's Building is located, and as well as the general plan, EIR, in 2015. It found all potentially significant effects on the environment could be mitigated to less than significant levels. In terms of the last meeting and comments we received from, as I mentioned, Caltrans and Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife, there were some comments about the parking, and we can go through the detail on that. There is a fairly detailed description of the parking situation in the staff report. If you'd like, we could go through that, more specificity here. But there are 124 spaces required. It was reduced by nine guest spaces for the senior care plus seven spaces for the memory care, leaving 108 spaces required, but there actually were 113 spaces provided. So that technically is adequate and meets the zoning, or excuse me, the parking requirements for this particular use, the uses, I should say. The sitting plaza and trellis, there was some comments regarding that from Highway 116. And again, that one does satisfy the design criteria. There is no design-related safety concerns identified, and I know there was some discussion at our last meeting about, is it possible to move that plaza to another site on the project? But the issue was, and maybe JP might want to address this afterwards, but if there are any more questions, that the, it would normally be, there would be a frontage along the highway with a building that was long enough to actually provide some, the setback and some protection from the site and so forth, but the building is only 4,000 square feet, and so the idea was to put this, the plaza with the trellis and the seating area and so forth in plaza, and the applicants may want to speak to that as well, as how that originated and what was the purpose of that. But it, it would actually create other issues if it had to be moved to another part of the site, so you'd get a domino effect. One thought was maybe it would provide a few more parking spaces, but in terms of the specific number of parking spaces needed, it's already met that requirement. So staff's recommendation is to keep the sitting plaza and trellis along Highway 116. There were additional comments regarding the tree removal and replacement plan mitigations, and that was addressed in the conditions of approval, 44 to 46. Olivia may want to speak to that if you have questions. There were also some questions about the California Tiger Salamander, site-specific biological analysis and mitigation requirements, so that we've addressed that, and so we'll, I'm going to move on from there unless there's any questions at this point. So just briefly, in terms of the summary and staff recommendations, the general plan and zoning identify the location as appropriate for the mixed-use development proposed. The rezone would accommodate the residential care facility for the elderly within the CG zoning district with a use permit. Again, that'll go to council for, for the actual approval. There is a resolution in your packet regarding a recommendation to the council, should you choose to make that recommendation. It's compatible with existing and pending developments to the east and combine to develop portions of Highway 116 circulation, including bike and pedestrian transit infrastructure. And I know there were some questions on some of those topics as well at the last meeting. The planning commission is to consider and recommend all the proposed entitlements to the council. That's our, that's the process right now, and what staff is recommending. So I'll hold off on the actual specific recommendations when we come back to that later in the hearing.
Thank you very much. And for members of the public, what we're doing is we're going through a hearing at the moment, and we have the staff report that's given, a report now. We'll go through a process with the, the planning commissioners asking questions, and they will open it up for the, the public to make comments before we finally bring it back to a closed session where we can ask more questions and consider and deliberate. So I'll open it up for the planning commission, and has anybody got some questions?
Yeah. So under the NAGDak, under solid waste, you have two covered solid waste containment areas. You only have recycle and trash in there in the NAGDak, so I would like that include compost. And I was wondering why there's only two for the, for the memory care and assisted living and the commercial, if that was adequate for all three? I'm looking at page seven of the NAGDak, or under solid waste.
So this is just what was proposed from the project description, so the applicant may want to clarify if there has been any consideration of compost as part of the project, but that's what was, was analyzed, was the waste and recycled, which is the standard.
We can, we can correct the condition right now that it is required, that they have all three containers for landfill, for recycling, and for compost. Yeah, absolutely. I think it's required in this case.
And it's required under state law now?
Right.
It's required under state law, under AB 1826, that if you have more than four cubic yards of solid waste going once a week, that you're required to have compost?
So I've got a question about the pedestrian side. On the negative declaration, it's very good to read it, it's very nice to have the time to actually go through and read it, which is very educational. But in the Cattati bicycle and pedestrian section, it does an analysis of the current uses and the new uses, and does it consider, it's an environmental or negative declaration, but we're introducing a vulnerable population of seniors into this area, so does it consider that context?
Well, it considers the, in terms of the special use, so the assisted living and the memory care, those particular users of the pedestrian facility, is that what you're asking?
Right.
So it considers what existing facilities are there and what is proposed by the project, and it does consider those vulnerable populations, as you put it, in terms of, you know, where, where they might be walking to or walking to or from. So we looked specifically at the intersection, and there does include a crosswalk there, and so with the, the striping and the enhanced improvements along the curb there to provide those additional bull bouts, that was looked at and found to be adequate. It wasn't producing or resulting in any perceived hazard associated with introducing pedestrians there.
So we're, as I understand it, it was mentioned that there was that crossing, but in the plan, in the actual, in what's being done, it's only for traffic that is being considered at that Alder Lane and Highway 116, despite the fact that the pedestrian plan actually has it as a crossing. Does that come into the negative declaration sort of analysis?
I guess I'm not clear on what you're, you're saying the pedestrian, the bike and ped, pedestrian plan show some other improvements?
So the bicycle and pedestrian plan shows a crossing at the Alder Lane connection. There's improvements that are required that essentially take it to at least a three-lane road because there's a left-hand turn, but there's nothing in the actual plans that say that there shall be any pedestrian accommodations made at this point. So I'm just, in the, in the analysis, I know it's brought up, so I was fascinated that it was actually brought up, but there doesn't seem to be anything in the analysis, and I'm just wondering, does it, is it covered in terms of, of, you know, the, the pedestrian analysis says, okay, this project doesn't divide in Cattati anymore, isn't creating any more damage, but in fact, we're introducing more people to that area who will be wanting to walk or expected to walk or being encouraged to get out there and walk, and yet the analysis says is that, gee, we have a plan to do something, but we're not, we're not actually implementing that plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, there, there needs to be some reconciliation between the bike and pedestrian master plan, which was completed prior to the general plan. So the crossing that is identified in the bike and pedestrian crossing, there is, the bike and pedestrian master plan, for folks that are unaware, does identify a new crossing or an enhanced crossing at Alder across 116. However, currently, there is not a plan, that, that plan for the stoplight, when you would need a stoplight for a pedestrian crossing of 116, has been relocated down to West Cattati Avenue on that side, or where a new north-south street would go in on the western kind of edge of this property, that street's not going in yet. So that particular crossing will probably, but it's going to go from one, that one crossing at Alder to those two separate crossings. That will occur when, when warrants are met for, well, one, when we do the West Cattati realignment and entrance into the marketplaces, that development comes online, and then when the warrants are met for the actual signalization, which could happen as we develop the marketplace property that's to the east, and that's, and then when the north-south road goes in, that's pretty, that's farther out. So it does not include the crossing across 116 that I think that you're looking for.
Yes, that's what I'm referring to. So we've got an analysis that says, gee, a crossing is going to be in there, but actually the plan's changed, and we're not identifying it within this project. So, you know, that leads me on to some of the other questions in there, that we're really introducing this elderly population to an area that's essentially, right now, is largely an industrial zone. We have, across the road, we have Shamrock, we have a lot of vehicles traveling down that road, we have one walking path that's on the other side, that's already part of another project, but how, how do we reconcile that we're bringing in an elderly population essentially into a commercial zone that's also largely industrial?
Well, I, I would argue that it's also residential out there, and it is being developed that way. Just a month ago, you approved forty-some units of residential housing out there. This one is both residential and commercial in its nature, but it certainly is residential and is introducing people out there. And I, and I think I understand what your concern is, is that it's, that there, we still have that empty parcel that's not currently proposed for development, which would provide us with that connection. I believe that's what you're ultimately looking for. And that's what, that's what the city is waiting for, is for that project to come forward with development, in which case they will be required to do the installation of those pedestrian pathways. At that point, we may also drive the need for the crossing across 116 and then down West Cattati, which, which is identified on the plan as a, as a pathway. I think that's, that's all I can tell you, is that we've identified it, we do identify these in our bike and pedestrian master plans, the need for these pedestrian facilities. We do identify it in the, in the general plan, the need for these pedestrian facilities, and we have created a TIF program to help fund these as development comes along on all over the city. And it's, we just, we do it as the opportunities present themselves the best that we can. This project, we can't force them to go off-site and put in all the pedestrian facilities, I think, that you're looking for, but we have asked them to do the pedestrian facilities that we believe that we can ask them to do and, and which are included in the project. And then, I don't know, Craig, do you want to add anything else to public works programming? But that's, that's the only response I can give you.
I've got nothing to add to that. I think that was already a comprehensive answer. Thanks.
Okay. I'm just, just bringing up, you know, that we are looking at an assisted living with an elderly population, and when I started doing some research on this, I mean, we're, CDC recommendation is for people to get out and walk. The statistics in California right now is, is that there were 870 pedestrian deaths last year from combination of reasons, not really, but that's from the Office of Traffic Studies, and it actually had gone up 20%. So we know that really it's the infrastructure that makes a really big difference to how pedestrians sort of move, and particularly when you have older people who will be slower, may have wheelchairs and stuff for getting around. I mean, I think we're essentially creating a, we, we know from the other project and talking to people, it was a pedestrian island. We know that the new project going in will add more to that, but the connections with West Cattati aren't really being talked about, so I just feel it's an issue. CDC recommends people get out for two and a half hours a week, so where would people actually go if they were walking on that? It's the best form of stimulation. So that's just, that's an open issue that we've got there. Okay, thank you.
I have a question about parking again. So I was following along on the explanation about the parking calculation on packet page 18, if anyone wants to look, until it got to the, the portion talking about reduced parking for mixed-use projects, which is almost at the end of the second to the last paragraph. And it speaks about horizontal mixed-use provides parking for each use, meaning because there's a commercial building and housing, that they're sharing the same parking spaces, And that with the residential component providing the parking required for multifamily dwellings. Well, minus the guest spaces required, and it's referring to table 3-7, I didn't look up table 3-7, but can you explain to me why it's a reduction due to mixed use? Only because I could see that in a multifamily dwelling, it would be totally different than a building for residential care of elderly that has a lot of guests and a lot of employees, a lot of staff. So to me, those two aren't the same thing. It's, I don't consider a residential care facility for the elderly a multifamily dwelling. So I don't quite understand the logic of the reduction of the parking spaces, so maybe you could walk us through that. Page 18 of the packet.
Yes, it's Jim Carney with helping with the staff report here. I think in terms of definitions of, well, the terms you've mentioned, it's a, it is a mixed use because it's got residential and it's got commercial, right? The senior assisted care portion, the larger, on the slide here, is for independent care. It's, it's not just elderly people who are bound to their units, they, they have cars, they can get out, and they can move around, obviously, then they have free choice to, to come and go in their unit. The memory care is a completely different type of facility. Those folks generally don't go out, or if they do go out, they go out with assistance from staff there to maybe get outside, to get some fresh air, to just look at the trees or have some stimulation that's part of their, their treatment there. The commercial use, it's a small facility. The amount of parking needed for that is relatively small compared to the parking needed for, as you say, visitors and so forth, for the, for the independent, for the assisted care, and obviously, there's going to be visitors for the memory care. These tables refer to the plans, and maybe the applicants might want to address that, but those are on the plans that were submitted and identify how the parking is broken up between the various uses and so forth. So it does meet the city's requirements for parking, given those three uses, and I certainly understand your question regarding accounting for all the possible folks that may need to park there at any given time, and so I, I don't know if that helps with you. And so I, I don't know if that helps with your analysis.
Well, I beg to differ on assisted living not requiring staff, because my mother actually was a resident in assisted living and in memory care, and they have dining rooms, they have kitchen facilities, they offer meals, every meal for the assisted living. That's a lot of staff people.
Oh, certainly.
They also have people that are distributing pharmaceuticals. They don't allow, you know, it has to be done. There's a lot of services you can have added on to your basic assisted living. So I just think that comparing it to a multifamily residential area is, is not a great analysis. And I don't think they should have been reduced, but I guess I'll, I'll talk about that later. That's all I have for right now.
Anything, Lisa, there? So let's close the questions to staff and open it up to the public, and we'll ask, we'll ask the developer first, Tom Monahan, if he could come up and present the project. Again, I know, but thank you very much.
Thank you, council members. Tom Monahan for the applicant. Nice to see you again, four weeks later. So I might be able to address just a couple of, couple of quick questions that I've heard tonight and heard at the past hearing. It sounds like on the compost question, we've got that resolved by adding that condition. So I think that, that one's taken care of. With regard to parking, this particular type of use is a hybrid use, and, and experts have a pretty broad variance of opinions of how much parking is actually required. The hundred and twenty-four spaces was based on city, city code and city parameters for that, and then there was a discount for that, if you will. You could put a few more spaces on the, on the site, not too many more, but you could put a few more. It would compromise the, the trellis area that's along Highway 116, and that's, that's really your call. We're happy to provide a few more spaces. The operational folks think that we have plenty of spaces, you know, they're, they're familiar with that, they've been running the, these types of facilities for thirty years. And so they're, the number they think is eighty spaces is the number that they're comfortable with. So they feel that it's, it's adequately parked as is. There is off-street parking, in other words, off-site parking on the street on Alder, which is also available. So there are other parking resources in the neighborhood, but we're happy to provide a few more spaces if, if that's your direction. It, it is a tough, a tough thing to get exactly right, but I certainly understand your, your question. I think Chair Hancock, your questions about introducing elderly into this particular neighborhood, we do see this as a mixed-use neighborhood, it is with, with the addition of the Village and the marketplace, which is currently not built, but we see that as a master plan, interrupted by some challenges that we've had with the economy and, and other issues. But ultimately, those pedestrian links on the north side of 116 will link up with the rest of the city's kind of walkability and, and safe pedestrian crossings. The issue of crossing on 116 is an issue. We don't see our folks really wanting to cross 116. That's more of a citywide goal and objective, which we're happy to, you know, we've contributed to that, we want to continue to build out that pedestrian and bike connection there. So we share your, your goals there. You know, typically, the folks that are in assisted, so you have memory care and then assisted living, memory care folks are generally contained. We have an internal, what we call a kind of a wandering courtyard, where they can wander on their own, it's totally secure. We have an outdoor wander area that is on the, on the west side of the property, where folks can, more of a garden setting, and those, that's usually accompanied by staff. So those particular folks, really, we don't want them wandering too far. The other general assisted living population, the average age is eighty-five, eighty-seven years old, so they are, they are, some of them are more housebound, and some of them are able to get out, and generally, when they do, they're accompanied. People have to kind of gauge what their ability is to really kind of take on the neighborhood. We also have a, a bus facility where people can, can, you know, get on the bus and get out and go to other parks in the area, they can walk in, you know, not just in this particular area, but they can, you know, navigate the rest of the city and elsewhere, so they can get out and have activities. We generally have an activity director that will take people on guided walks into safe locations. So we're, we're, you know, when you're custodian of people's parents, you're really careful with how much you want them to do and how much exertion they can really do. So it's, it's a smaller segment of the population in this particular type of project. And we think that between the courtyards that are internal to the project and the pedestrian areas around, the circulation is, is, is adequate in our, in our minds. But we certainly appreciate, you know, the thought there, and we would love to see the whole west part of, of Cattati 116 corridor built out, and we'd, we'd love to do our part with this project, the Village project, we're working now to try and get that up for construction in the springtime, so that would link that, that section. So it kind of gets built, you know, piece by piece, unfortunately, is kind of the way it has to happen. And then also, a few weeks ago, we went through the presentation, I'm happy to revisit that if there's any questions or any other comments. Otherwise, we're standing by for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? So members of the public, if you've got some questions, I saw somebody, yeah, if you'd like to come up and state your name if you'd like to for the record, and your address for the record if you want to, but no requirement.
Yeah, my name is Niles Sued, and I'm a resident at the Cattati cottages. You see the corner of the complex there where it says Ford Lane. You know, overall, it looks like a good idea, however, there's a little bit of a cart before the horse thing going on here. I did hear you, Mr. Hancock, saying something about adding a third lane there for turning. Is that something that's going to happen before this goes into effect, or, or afterwards, or?
We can take your questions, so keep on going, but I understand it's, it's in the plans, as I understand it.
Basically about that intersection, first having dozens of construction workers and trucks coming in and parking and working on this area, and then, you know, people coming and going, residents. I noticed, for instance, that the only entrances to the complex are on Alder Avenue, that there is no 116 exit, okay? So you're putting a lot of extra traffic onto a street that, it looks like a perfectly fine straight street, but you already have people zooming through there way too fast using as a cut across between, you know, Redwood Drive and Hellman, you know, bypassing the main intersection. And the intersection of Alder with 116, it's not the worst intersection in the world, but it's not the greatest either. You don't really see the street until you're right on top of it, because it doesn't really show up everywhere, there's a cluster of trees right there and too much foliage, so that you don't really see that, oh, this is where I turn. For people who are not used to that turn up, they'll miss it, half the time. If they are used to it, I, I still have to watch and say, okay, my turn's coming up right there. So I think before you get this whole thing going, Mr., you mentioned something.
If you could, yeah, if you could.
There may be a traffic light going in there. I think you need to put the traffic light there first, before this whole ball gets rolling, to make that into a safer intersection.
There is a very defined plan for that, so I'd like staff to answer, but you're right, there is something that's already in the requirements.
And is, is it going to be in place before this gets built?
We'll let staff answer that one.
Okay.
We'll let the staff, but if you've got any other questions, you know.
I could elaborate, but it's mainly around the safety of that intersection.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any more members of the public that would like to ask questions? Yes, at the back there?
Good evening, Jenny Blaker. I've got four different points. One is about the solar panels. On the package page one, two, three, it says mitigation measure GHG, greenhouse gases one, shall be implemented. Measure GHG one requires that the project install onsite solar voltaic. And so on the plans, it just shows areas on the roof dedicated for future solar panels. And I'm wondering why are they future solar panels rather than part of the plan to begin I had a question about wastewater capacity, and it's kind of mixed up with questions about overriding considerations on the general, on the environmental impact report. I'm still trying to get my head around the idea that the environmental impact report for this tears off the two thousand and one environmental impact report for the South Sonoma Business Project, which is a different project, on a different site, in a different place, with different uses. And this one is west of Alder Avenue instead of east of Alder Avenue, it's residential instead of commercial. There will be different uses for water and wastewater and other utilities because it's residential. And there are quite a few contradictory statements in the documents you have in front of you to do with wastewater capacity. And in several places, it says that the existing permitted capacity of the Laguna Water Treatment Plant would be exceeded. And on the other hand, it says that in the EIR, it was, it was stated that there would be significant and unavoidable impacts, including wastewater, but that the City of Cattati adopted a statement of overriding considerations regarding the potential to exceed wastewater treatment capacity or the requirements of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And it seems to be saying that because of these overriding considerations, there'll be enough wastewater capacity, but it doesn't explain that in terms of figures and how there would be increased capacity to deal with increased wastewater use. So I'm confused about the overriding considerations from the previous EIR being used to allow things like more wastewater capacity than there, or wastewater than there is capacity for. Third point is about the California Tiger Salamander. I noticed that there's been some new information about two updated records within two miles of the project site, and my understanding, it was actually within about one mile. I don't know how much difference that makes, but I know that about one point three miles is a significant number. And also, that it says for the mitigation, under the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Recovery Plan, it says Bio-4 requires that the applicant secure credits from the West Cattati Core California Tiger Salamander area. And I'm wondering where those credits will be applied, because there isn't a conservation bank in West Cattati Core area, as far as I know. And it says any preservation plan would have to be approved by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So is there a preservation plan that incorporates mitigation for the Tiger Salamander in the West Cattati Core area? I'm not clear about that. And then the fourth thing is to do with transportation, and looking at the site plan that you had up on the screen just now, I wondered if there could be a walking path for also scooters and wheelchairs and so on that would be completely off the road, nothing to do with Highway 116, to allow people to get from the west side to the east side of Cattati. I gather there is already an informal walking path that people use from the Village Commons, although I haven't seen it and I don't know what sort of state it's in or anything, but if people are already walking that way, can that be formalized somehow? And lastly, I wondered for Cattati citywide, whether there couldn't at some point be a bus shuttle service that could take people from the train station to the hotel, shopping areas, the library, and this area? And whether perhaps this project could put some money into that to make a shuttle service happen, so that there's less need for people to rely on cars? I understand that there are already some bus shuttle services happening in Sebastopol and Cloverdale, and I think Healsburg, and maybe Cattati could have that in its plans and include this area in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment on this evening? I'm seeing nobody, so I'll close public comment. And if I could bring those back to staff to answer questions that the, the public brought up. Niles Sued, was that it? Sued, particularly about the plans of that junction, Highway 116 and Alder, which I looked at in a lot of detail as well, so it'd be good to hear the staff's response.
Yes. Oh, right, right, right. So this is a question about the interim, interim traffic signal at Alder. And so, no, the, the traffic signal there is not anticipated or required to be in place by the, at the time the development occurs. We do have a condition of approval there where the applicant, the developer will, is to design the interim traffic signal, do an engineer's cost estimate that the city accepts and provide the city with that funding, and it is the intent of the city to endeavor to get that traffic signal, to proceed to install that traffic signal. So it might come in a year, two years after the development, but not, not prior to that development occurring. And that's supported by traffic analysis that was conducted for the project.
Hang on, just for a second, Craig.
I think we've.
We have a cartoon going on right now.
Had an override of some sort creep in, and a little bit of humor, and maybe we could all get up and take a break? No, okay.
I'd like to clarify that there will be the left turn lane as you're, as you're eastbound on Highway 116 coming into Cattati, there will be a left turn lane to that, that intersection that is getting in a more prominent and larger. There will be grade changes at the Alder Street as it approaches 116, so its visibility will be enhanced. As well, if you're westbound on Highway 116, going from Cattati to Sebastopol, there will be a right turn lane, turn taper, actually, it's, it's not a full lane, but a turn taper under Alder Avenue. So there are turn movement improvements that are being done as a part of the project. They will have to be done before the project is completed, so the timing is that they go together. The, the signal is, is based on warrants, when it's called for. Ultimately, we really don't want to see a signal there, because the general plan identifies the closure of Alder, and then it becomes cul-de-sac, and then the, the signalization would occur at West Cattati Avenue, where we'd enter the marketplace and this complex. Not quite all the way to Madrone, but right at the, at the west side of this particular property, there is another light at Madrone that's also proposed in, in the, in the general plan. So you're going to see a series of stops there eventually.
Could you just clarify, for when the project's built, what will be the changes at Alder?
So when the project is built, you're going to see the intersection at Alder and 116, you'll see some grade changes, you'll see changes in the drainage ditches right along that area, so it's kind of, the road will be expanded a little bit. You'll see a right turn taper if you're westbound, you'll see a left turn lane with, you know, with the safety area if you're eastbound. And there'll be a deposit made to the city for money for the signal should warrants call for it, we can, we can. You'll see a left turn lane, you know, with the safety area, if you're eastbound. And there'll be a deposit made to the city for money for the signal should warrants call for it. We can immediately put the signal in, and there'll be money to pay for that signal.
Could you explain what warrants means? If warrants...
I think Craig could probably explain that better as the city engineer. But it's basically traffic counts and looking at movements. And then it reaches a threshold where they say it now has to have a signal. And this is a state facility, so it's really Caltrans that makes that call.
Correct, yeah. There is a traffic analysis that estimates with the development of that area that within 10 years, that interim traffic signal would be warranted. So there's some flexibility there. I think, you know, safety concerns, which would probably tilt the scales to installing the traffic signal sooner rather than later. And so we've covered that with having that condition of approval, where we collect the money to fund it.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Earlier, you said within a year or two of completion of the project, and now you're saying within 10 years. But I'm hearing two different numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I... Yeah, I mean, I'll have to open it up for public comment if we want some more. But I think it's, there is a design that fits when the construction is actually done. So when the property is, when the new facility is put in place, then there is going to be some accommodations on the road. There'll be a new road design done. And then later on, there's another design that may kick in with a traffic light. So I think...
But it could be a year or two years or 10 years.
Yes. So that's just based on Caltrans numbers. So I'm being very flexible here, just because we've got a small audience. We can go on to the... Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay. Just to be clear, the only thing that's being considered for, that's not being considered as part of that intersection improvement right now, to be built as part of the project, if the project moves forward, is the traffic signal. The turn lanes, all of that, and the widening and changing the grade so the approach isn't so steep as you call it. All that will be done as part of this project. It's only the signal that may, the timeline isn't certain on that, that it could go out to 10 years.
Thank you. If we could have the second member of the public, Jenny's, questions answered?
Let me touch on the solar. We only, at this point, when they come in for building permits, well, then we're going to want to know exactly where that solar is. At this point, this is preliminary design review. So we just want to make sure that they are aware that they have a solar requirement. It's 10% of the energy needs of the facility and that they're making, identifying space for that and are including that. So it's not future. It's, I don't know why the language says that, but it's part of the project. But we just don't know precisely where that solar. I mean, when they design the solar, it might be on one side of the building versus the other side of the roof. We just want to make sure that they're planning for it and their roof space. And then I'll let Olivia talk about the tiering, as well as the CTS. And then there was a transportation question about going, requiring the developer. It sounded like asking developer to go onto someone else's property and build pathways, which we're not, we can't do that at this juncture. Oh, and there is a wastewater question, which I will direct to both Craig and Olivia, since it was an environmental document.
Sure. I will touch on those items and then ask Craig to add on as well. So on the tiering item first, this is really a CEQA-specific language. It actually doesn't change anything in the analysis, one way or the other. What tiering allows for is to have reduced discussion of certain impacts when something has previously been identified. This mitigated NEGDAC doesn't actually do that. It kind of, it says that we are tiering off of the South Business Park EIR because of the interface at the frontage of Highway 116. So as you recall, the EIR from 2002 was amended twice. And both of those times included frontage improvements. So that extends along Highway 116 and includes the frontage in front of this property. So that's why we have reference in here to tiering from that document, because that EIR was amended to include those frontage improvements. So that's the only relationship and why that's pulled in here. But the analysis is very robust and goes through all of those discussion points anyways. In terms of the CTS, we did touch base with the project biologist, and we did confirm that there were two new sightings, not two new records. So the database is a statewide database that is updated periodically. And as new records come in, it's updated. So if we checked it today, there might be some new records as well. So that doesn't, you know, the fact that there's new records coming in, that's happening all the time and constantly. It doesn't change what we know about the site. We already know that this is in critical habitat. We know that there are CTS in the region, even though they're, and in the vicinity of the project. Even though the site has been subject to an extensive amount of monitoring surveys over the last 15 years, there's no sign of CTS on the site now. The environmental document and the permits that they will be required are treating it as if CTS are present on the site. And so they're required to do that mitigation, to offset those impacts. And that is something that will be, go through the core, through both the core process at the federal level and the state as well, provided a comment letter, and they were, they didn't add on to anything with the CTS mitigation. So that indicated that they were satisfied with that. So in terms of the west core area, that's something that I'll need to look into additionally to know exactly what mitigation bank. But I'm confident that there is a mitigation path forward that has been identified. And if there is a lack, there are, these mitigation banks do fill up. They do, and then new ones are created. So that is, again, it's something that is in flux. And that is something that through the Army Corps process, they will have a permit that signs off that says, "At this location, you shall purchase, you know, X credits from this bank." So having that specific bank identified at this point is not needed. What's really important is that we've identified this potential impact, and the offset has been identified as well. And then on the wastewater bit, I will just say that some of the information, you know, talking about the override, that's just fact-based. That is what the general plan did. The EIR said that there is this exceedance and did an override, so that is referenced. Part of that process then was to mitigate and identify ways to correct that. And there are a number of programs that the city is implementing to correct that deficiency. And I can, Craig can add on to that.
Sure. The city has a wastewater master plan that was completed in 2010. And so when a project, this project's no exception. Projects come forward, a sewer capacity study is done. And so it's both in conveying the wastewater, making sure that the conveyance capacity is adequate, and then checking in with the City of Santa Rosa's subregional wastewater treatment plant, making sure that that is adequate as well. And so that study was completed. The City of Cattati is backing up from there. The City of Cattati is one of several cities, Santa Rosa, Rota Park, Sebastopol, and South Park Sanitation District, that all send their flows to the subregional wastewater treatment plant for treatment. And we account for about 3% of those flows. And so the treatment plant capacity is not, is definitely adequate for this development. And just recapping, the city internally, the city has the hydraulic flow calculations to determine that the pipeline capacity is sufficient. So it all fits together.
Thank you. You were gonna, I'm gonna touch on the transportation question? I think it was...
I think they did. They said you can't go in somebody else's property and have a...
Right, but there was a bus shuttle as well. Okay, you're right. That question came up. The bus shuttle would be something for the future as well. I mean, I think we all like to consider that. And so I'll bring this back to the commission for discussion. Anybody want to start off?
Well, I think it's, I mean, we don't have anything like this in town. We do have something like Charles Street Village in town. It's a small assisted living. But we don't have any kind of memory care or assisted living, which I think is a low impact for the City of Cattati. And since Suzanne and I were kind of in the same shoes lately, and since my mom's 90, I'm looking at a lot of these places and surveying a lot of the parking. And I'm, this is what I do for a living, is compost and recycling. So I'm in a lot of these facilities in Petaluma. I do know that even though, I... Is there any kind of crossover we can do with the parking for the assisted living and the memory care? I wonder if there's any kind of thing where if you don't use your parking spot, at some point, that can be used as a visitor?
Well, I think it's combined. So that's the idea with a dual usage.
So I know with assisted living, that not everybody has a car.
Right.
And I know it's used a lot for caregivers or somebody coming in to see that person. They use that parking space. But I just know there's some crossover there, where you have a lot of parking for people that don't, that are not driving.
I think that's how they were calculating it, based on that not everyone has a car that's in assisted living. But I know at the assisted living facility that my mother was in, they had assigned parking spaces for those people that had cars in the assisted living. And then the other ones that didn't have, they had a number painted on the parking space. The ones that didn't have a number is where the guests could park. So that's how that works.
Flexibility that way, that not everybody's going to have a car. And that, you know, hopefully, when the folks come in that build this out are flexible with, because I know, you know, people's birthdays, you know, holidays, things like that, you'd be surprised. I'm always looking for a parking spot at these facilities. And I'm in, there's like eight in Petaluma. So I, I'm in them all the time. So that is a concern, because I just know, like I said, the parking issue is always something I'm dealing with. You know, other than that, I, like I said, I think this is low impact. I think, you know, folks that are in their 80s are not wandering aimlessly on 116. I think, you know, there's a lot of, in assisted living and memory care, there's a lot of staffing that goes with this. You pay a lot of money to have people look after your parents or loved ones. So I'm not concerned about somebody wandering onto 116. I mean, I know in memory care, you have to actually punch in. It's all electronic. So I'm comfortable. I know the wastewater issue, I mean, there's much more wastewater in a memory care and assisted living than there is going to be in multifamily units. There just is. So, you know, there's a lot more waste, there's a lot more everything. Yes. There's a lot of laundry involved in these things. So, you know, I know we have the capacity right now. We only have, we don't have something like this in town. So those are my comments.
Yeah, I mean, I'm feeling it's a nice, or looking at the design, I like the design of it, since we're on the preliminary, you know, preliminary design as well. I like the court charts that are in there. I am, I mean, my biggest concern about it is that we've got, we're introducing 88 seniors, like I said earlier, to an area. And we haven't really got a plan, or there's a very, very limited plan for where they can get out and walk. We have somebody that's over 100 on our road. And only in the last four or five years has she not been walking. But she is to get out and walk. So the CDC requirements are, or the CDC recommendations to all local governments, are that you should facilitate people to get out there and be able to walk around. And so we have some limited capability. But I mean, I think this project has been on the books now, or we've had this area that's been looked at for 15 years. We have a plan that's actually come up, and yet we still haven't. We've got Cattati that's made a statement about walkability, and yet we still haven't managed to connect that zone up to the rest of Cattati. We didn't 15 years ago, when this plan came through, make a requirement to connect up. I think the Cattati Villages is what it was called, or the Village Project, with the other areas. So there's a narrow area that hasn't been connected. And it just seems like that that should really, we should be somehow making the effort to get these connections in. And just, you know, can, we're requiring a junction change, but there isn't any accommodations for pedestrians. So how to make it safe for people to walk at that area? So I'm just, you know, I think it's certainly a nice project. It's certainly a nice thing there. But when I looked at the map and I looked at where there would be an RFC residential care facility allowed and why it hadn't been allowed in this area, why it hadn't been put in to begin with, it just seemed to be the worst area in Cattati for the walkability. So, I mean, we're making a recommendation to the city council. And, you know, what we actually recommend, and we're not making a final decision on this. But anyway, I'll pass it over to... I'm not worried about the parking, I should say, because I think that the financial, the commercial analysis has to be able to have enough places for parking. And I think that dual use, I mean, if there isn't enough places, you're going to lose business on the commercial side. So I guess that, just on that level, I think the, I'll go with the analysis on the parking. But pass it over to anybody else for one second.
Thank you for all the information. I know we had a lengthy discussion about this a month ago, and you answered a lot of my questions, so I appreciate it. I just want to reiterate that I think it's extremely important to have the facility here in Cattati. I have a 97-year-old grandmother who just went into a facility for the first time a couple of months ago. So this is kind of near and dear, and I look forward to seeing it. In our community, that being said, I completely agree with our concerns for walkability. And I hope that this will continue to be a conversation as it moves forward and also continue to be a conversation as we see other development come in and we can connect the east side of Cattati to the west side. So I look forward to seeing how that moves forward. Thank you.
I also agree that we really need a facility like this in Cattati. So, and I like the design. I would like to see more parking and perhaps a reworking of that trellis area to be parking and possibly have, instead of an archway with trellis, maybe trellis along 116 with cars behind it. I don't know. It's an idea. Also, I'd still like to see an additional elevator added to the assisted living building. I think two elevators are important in case of an emergency. If one is being used in case of a fire, a lot of those people will not be able to ambulate downstairs. They're going to have to have an additional elevator in order to be able to evacuate properly. But those are pretty much my only concerns, parking and an elevator.
Okay, thank you. So we've got three resolutions here, I think, that we want to vote on, don't we? And we've all got it. We've got to take them separately and vote on each one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carrie, can we have the PowerPoint back on for a sec, please? So the first recommendation... So the first recommendation is to approve the resolution regarding the SEQA analysis, the initial study mitigated negative declaration, meaning the requirements of SEQA, that covers the preliminary design review, the use permit, the lot line adjustment, and the rezoning that would be taken to the council. The second resolution would be regarding the adoption of the initial study and approval of the preliminary design review, use permit, rezoning, lot line adjustment for the Townsend Sterling mixed-use project and so forth. I think that covers it in terms of, there are actually three resolutions in your packet to, to approve.
Neil, can I ask a question?
Sure, yep.
So can we include, is everybody on board with including some of commissioners, Whipple's? You know, more parking and an elevator?
So the, one condition we had out there was the compost requirement.
Yes.
So that's definitely on there. I'm, I'm not, I'm happy with the parking as it is, but.
I, I agree with the elevator comment. If that's something that, you know, from a design perspective, makes sense. From a safety perspective, it makes perfect sense to me. I don't have as many concerns about the parking, so I think I would withhold from adding that.
I guess we're two and two on the parking. I, I just, I, I don't see a lot of people right on 116 using the trellis or sitting down right on the freeway, basically, right there. And I don't know who would be using that. It's not going to be the residents, and it's not going to be, I don't know, maybe the employees eating lunch or something, but, you know, I just don't see that. It's like a big plus for, for right along the corridor. So, I mean, like I said, I, I see it all the time with the parking, that it's a critical thing for all these places. And like I said, I'm, I'm probably, I could name six different places I'm at every week in, in Petaluma, and the parking is full. And it's not just, you know, in the morning, it's in the afternoon, it's at night, it's all different times. So, you know, especially with assisted living and memory care, you have visitors all the time in there. Hopefully, you have visitors all the time. And so I would be just okay with including more parking and, and reworking that little trellis area. I just don't see that trellis area really getting, I mean, I'm going to put my foot in my mouth here, but I, I love the little trellis area right by Pete's, but I don't see tons of people sitting there. And so when we, maybe when we get the hotel, people will sit there and everything like that. But I just don't see that it's like a big draw right now, that everybody's sitting at that corner having their lunch. Or, you know.
I, I guess I see it as an attractive part of it, and that was part of the trade-off.
And I, and I do, I love that. But I mean, I'm, I'm talking like, if we do a trellis right on 116, yes, it looks nice, but who's going to be using it? Do you want something that just looks nice, or do you want something that's actually functional for the facility? I mean, it can look nice. You can tweak it a little here and there, but I'm just saying, parking in this, you said, I, I see it all the time.
There, there was a, when it was presented, there was a requirement whereby, maybe you could go through at JP on what the trellis came up from, because it was a trade-off with having the shape of the building there. Or Jim, whoever's responsible on that.
Right. So there's a requirement for the development in the Gravenstein corridor that the building facades make up 100% of the frontage. There are exceptions to, to that. One of them is like providing a driveway, for example, into, into a project. Another is a pedestrian facility, pedestrian plaza. So that's what we were after. And we also have a parking lot screening requirement, that you can't just put parking right up to Highway 116 completely exposed. So we were trying to, one, tackle the screening of the parking, two, develop some sort of pedestrian plaza feature, something that allowed us to get past this 100% frontage. Because we also did look at 100% frontage, which was building, bringing, you know, this, that care facility. This was discussion, not actual plan, right up front. And we, nobody liked that idea, you know, so. So that's what it was. It was an attempt to make the limited pedestrian facilities that we have as attractive as possible. There is a bus stop that's going to be going in that area. So it was all, that, that was, that was the thinking behind it. We felt like the parking was met. And actually, we, at staff, we actually thought it was a little overparked. So, and that's the trend, is moving towards less parking. So we don't usually, when we're already at or above the parking standards, we're not at staff level looking for more parking, ever. We're going the other direction now. That's kind of what's happening. So that's where it came from. I can, I can, I've written a couple of conditions to address. Let me read them. "Applicant shall modify the proposed trash enclosures to include containers for recycling, compost, and landfill." Is that satisfactory?
Thank you.
And then I have another that says applicant shall modify the parking area to include additional parking areas as, as, as much as possible, I guess. We don't know. We have to be careful when we start modifying it, because we've done studies with the fire department about how trucks move through there. There, we can't take away area that's designated for stormwater control. There's landscaping requirements. So there are some things. It's not just adding a few more spaces. We have to look at it, and I can't give you a number of spaces that we would be able to provide without some analysis on it. And then you have in front of you that condition of approval from an issue that was brought up last time, which was final, prior to final design review, "The applicant shall reconcile all tree removal and retention notes between all landscape, civil, and architectural plans." So we'll be adding those three. At this point, those would be three additional applications. Now, with respect to the elevator, we can ask the applicant to look at that. That is outside our purview. That's really a building code issue. We can't require them to put in a second elevator. But we can, I, I think they've heard your concerns, and that's what we can do.
Shouldn't that be the fire department also that analyzes that?
But, well, I don't know the answer to that, to be quite sure, but.
I, I've got a question on this area of conditions. We do have this junction that is being looked at in front, and it's adding an extra lane in there. And that's required as it's being built out. But there isn't any accommodation or a plan for an accommodation for the future for pedestrians to cross there. Now, we have got a whole problem with that area, but I think we should at least have a plan, even if it's not implemented straight away. So I'm wondering if anybody else is interested in that condition that would essentially say, "Design for pedestrian, safe pedestrian crossing at that point." And that's a very challenging word, that situation.
I think that's a great idea, but I would want it to be flexible enough for a traffic study to be done, or, or a safety analysis, something to determine at what location it's best to put a crossing. It might be better at West Khatati Avenue. It might be better at Madron. I'm not sure that we need three different crossings, but I, I think it should go hand in hand with wherever the traffic light is going to be installed.
If there's a traffic light installed, it should include some safety for pedestrians, which with three lanes crossing, really is unsafe if you've got to cross three lanes. So that would be a condition, you would, you would support that. And is that some language we could put in there, that if the, if there was a?
So any, any future, we, this is a, I don't think we could apply, I know what you're saying, but it's not a condition we could put on the project, because there's no timeline on that. You're actually making a recommendation to the city, and then how we view. But if crossing becomes available, I mean, excuse me, a light, then we would provide a crossing. I think that's implied. That's what's part of the general plan. That's why, since there is no light proposed at this time, why there is no crossing. Plus, if we got them across the street, we have nowhere to go with them right now. We don't have the facilities, so.
There's a shamrock across there. Okay, I, I, I'm, I hear you on that. Appreciate it. So we've basically got the trash enclosures and the tree removal, to pay attention to the tree removal. What is that? That's an order, the tree removal? Two extra conditions?
Three. Three. We will ask them to look at the parking unless you're asking us not to do that now.
I have just a question on that condition. So if we look at the parking, can you provide us a better understanding right now of how much the design would change along the highway there? Or, I'm just wondering if we're approving something, and then the design there could change significantly, or?
Well, I think that, that there's not much that can change. I'm going to look to see if we can come a little bit closer to 116, but that's about it. Because that central part, the, the design itself is going to remain largely the same, because the central part of that parking lot is dealing with the stormwater, stormwater runoff. That's its infiltration area. So I, I can look. I mean, that's all we can do, is we can, we can look at it. I, you know.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, it's, it's, yeah, it's ironic, because I, I think staff, and when this first project came in, we were telling the applicant, "We think you're overparked." And they said, "Well, we don't care. We want all this parking." It's interesting.
So I, I don't think we need to go down the parking.
Well, if it's going to change the whole design of the front of the property for only a couple parking spots, I'm willing to let that go.
Because, no, we've got that building there, then there would be a trellis, and then there's two more buildings that follow. So this will be breaking it up a little bit. It provides some relief. I mean, I had some questions about safety, but I'm going to basically assume that the site managers of the facility will manage that.
Is it possible to, to recommend something like, if, if the design can't be changed too much, if we can have a few more spots, parking spots, by changing that pedestrian plaza a little bit, then it wouldn't change the rest of the design, it would just be dealing with that one area?
Right, but you're just making an analysis based on a gut reaction, rather than on the, on a, on a calculated basis? Because there is data feeding into what these usages of the building are, and.
Mr. Chairman, we could also look at the possibility of doing some compact spaces, which we don't define in our code. We just have a standard space. But if, you know, the planning commission recommends, we could look at the possibility of maybe, by making the spaces a little bit smaller, maybe getting a few extra that way, too. I mean, it's, it's just a striping exercise at that point.
Yeah, that would, that would be a good idea. I would, I would go along with that.
Okay, I would, I would support that.
Me, too.
So we've got three conditions that we're looking at: the trash enclosures, the tree removal analysis, and a striping, a reevaluation of striping. So in terms of the resolutions, we have the first resolution, which is on the PDF, page 206, on the EIR, on the Negative Mitigated Declaration. So do we want to start off with just that one?
Sure, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Do you want to read it out?
I will read it. I move that we pass the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Khatati recommending city council adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring reporting program for the Townsend Sterling senior living and commercial project located at the corner of Gravenstein Highway 116 and Alder Avenue, and making the required findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
So we want to go for the second one identified in the packet. Now, basically, we've got two tied together, haven't we? Sorry, start.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you could, I would prefer it, if, I think it would be better if you reviewed or adopted the resolution on packet page 243 first. There is a reason to the madness in going in a particular order. One, the environmental document, then two, the zoning change, and then three, the project that relies on the two previous actions. In this case, you're not approving. They're just recommendations, so it's not as necessary, but it's the proper way to do it. So if we could go to page 243, that would be best.
And my understanding of this is these two were brought to the Planning Commission together, rather than one could have been brought forward first. This change to the zoning could have been brought forward earlier.
Yeah, it would have also required environmental analysis, though.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So the PDF, page 243, which is the zoning district's subject change. Do I have anybody who?
Sure. I make a motion to approve a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Khatati recommending the city council approve an amendment to Section 17.22.020, Table 2-3 of the Zoning Code, to allow residential care facilities for the elderly in the commercial Gravenstein Corridor zoning district, subject to approval of a use permit.
I'll second.
Could I have a roll call?
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
No.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we go on to the final resolution, page 210. Do I have anybody that will put that forward?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Khatati recommending city council approval of preliminary design review, a use permit, and a lot line adjustment to allow the construction of a new 77,000-square-foot assisted living facility with 88 units, a 24,100 memory care facility with 34 units, and a 4,000-square-foot commercial building located on 5.63-acre site at the northwest corner of the intersection of Gravenstein Highway, Highway 116, and Alder Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Do you want to include the conditions on that, or?
Oh, right. And three conditions that staff identified. Do you want them to be read out?
Including the three conditions that staff identified? Would you like me to read those out? Okay.
All right, I'll second.
Could I have a motion, please? I mean, a vote?
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Whipple?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. We'll move on to reports by staff. Thank you for the public that came to attend and listened to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few reports. One, the city applied for and was notified that we will receive $160,000 planning grant. This was from Senate Bill 2. This is grant money specifically to look at housing issues. So that's what we're going to do. And we're targeting October 24th. So pencil that on your calendar for now. It's not for sure. For a public workshop, a housing workshop, you will all be invited to participate as members of the public. Then we're going to, two, three of the things that we're looking at, really, we're responding in some cases, ways to state mandates that are coming down with respect to housing. But, and one of them is an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. For two years, we've been without an ordinance, operating under state law, and we really knew need to bring in a Khatati-focused, you know, ADU ordinance that's made for Khatati. We're going to look at cottage housing ordinance, which is, it's kind of like the PUDs that used to happen in the past. A lot of Khatati. A lot of Cattati was built up that way, but we don't have that tool in our toolbox anymore. And we're kind of left with just the standard subdivision that you see, so we're gonna look at cottage housing as potential. And then, we're gonna look at some buy right, some housing moving it to buy right, as opposed to requiring a use permit, and what that is exactly. It might be, you can go up to 35 feet without a use permit, or you might be able to do a few more units, in terms of density, without a use permit. But, all that will be discussed, and you'll see it come to you. Craig is here, well, before I move on to that. The cannabis, we have a new webpage, site information page, it's, if you go to our, you know, cattatacyt.org, you can link over to the cannabis website, and we have started taking applications again for the remaining cannabis permits. There's eight more permits remaining in the city, for a variety of different uses within the cannabis business, and so, we're accepting those applications now.
But, just on that question, no more commercial? We've basically got just two, commercial, retail, is that what we have?
Right, right. You're talking, well, in terms of storefront retail, yeah. They're all commercial to us, they're engaged in some sort of commercial activity.
Sorry, retail, retail.
But, you're speaking to retail. So, we have the two retail, Mercy, which, as you know, the ones, the assisted living project, the commercial building that you just approved will be cannabis. We also have one that's a non-storefront retail delivery, that the city council approved a couple months ago. So, they just do delivery services, and they use Eaze, a web-based process. I was driving into Napa the other day, a big billboard for it, so. But then, but the other ones would be cultivation and manufacturing, so. Holiday schedules, I guess Noah asked me to ask you to look at schedules and let us know what your availability is going forward, just so that we don't try to schedule something that conflicts with one of your holidays. And...
But typically, the city shuts down, or goes, there's no more meetings after the beginning of December?
Right, right. I think he's thinking about Thanksgiving as well, and then, some people take extended holidays, you know, between Thanksgiving and Christmas sometime, whatever, whatever you think might conflict, just let us know. And then, Craig can speak a little bit on what's happening with wayfinding, I know there was a question about that. It is and has moved out of the planning camp, and it's now in the public works camp, and it is moving. So, I'll let Craig touch on that, and then, that's all I have to report on.
Thank you.
Chair, members of the commission, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The, as JP mentioned, the wayfinding has come out of the community development department, and is now in the public works department, so we're looking to deliver the project, excuse me, and are currently putting together a biddable set of documents. So, we're looking at, pulling together the specification book, and adding some details to the plans themselves. We hope to be putting it out for advertisement in October, and then, awarded in November. And depending on the kind of winter we get, it would just kind of be constructed underway in the winter, and then, the spring. And we're looking to get an engineer's estimate for what the whole thing would look like in its entirety, and just bid it as a whole. And then, depending on what our budget is, we could potentially have bid alternates, so that we would have a project that would, you know, could potentially be done in phases. But, our initial intention is to have it done as a one packet, because, you know, you don't want to sign to lead somebody, and then, it stops, and they're not really at their destination yet. So, we're gonna try to package it up into pieces that make sense. If I could, too, I wanted to talk about the $2.5 million of roadway projects we have going on right now. You notice the L-section in East Cattati Avenue and Old Redwood Highway are being improved, and it's a major expenditure right now for the city. And I think this speaks towards the coordination that engineering has with community development, is JP had mentioned, hey, you know, we've got some bike trails, and some bike class three bike trails in your construction area. And so, we went back, and we're gonna have some sharrows added, some bike, you know what sharrows are? Yes. It's when...
Everybody know?
A class three bike lane is basically, you've got these bike stencils on the roadway to show that you're sharing the road. And so, those are projects out of the Bike Pad Master Plan, that we're incorporating now into our project. It's Town Lincoln, Loretto, and I think LaSalle as well, and so, and Benson, yes. So, we will see, and that's the intention moving forward, is as we do these roadway projects, to incorporate the, to take the projects that are listed in the Bike Pad Master Plan, you know? And then, what we hope to do, and we're working away at it, is to present the five-year Street CIP for general plan conformance before this body, in a meeting in October. And that CIP is all about road preservation. It's not traffic signals, or widening, or anything else, it's just preserving the existing pavement, and then...
Can I ask a question about that? So, there is a requirement to bring back to the pedestrian and bicycle committee, when there's a lot of roadworks going on, where is that threshold? Where do you see that threshold that you actually bring it back for? Essentially, you know, is there some improvements for the pedestrian and bicycle side, when there's roadworks going on?
The five-year Street CIP is an excellent opportunity to do that, because we'll be looking at, you know, the five years' worth of programmed roadway improvements, and then, we can overlap that with the Bike Pad projects, and present that to the commission at that time as well, and that would be a great topic for discussion. And then, in December, January, in, actually, November, we're looking to bring the citywide capital improvement program. So, it covers not only the roadways, but the water system, sewer system, parks, storm drain, all of our different systems, in a comprehensive plan for, also for general plan conformance finding from this body. And then, each one of these efforts would then be brought towards city council for adoption. So, that's just a preview as to what we have planned in the coming months.
Very nice, well, that sounds like a really great idea. I really appreciate the wayfinding, I know there was, I was on the committee when we had a look at it. So, are you looking at, you do the bid in one go, which makes some sense and stuff, but then, do you, are you gonna schedule it in, in phases? And you were, I think you meant...
Once we get the engineer's estimate, we'll have an idea of the feasibility of doing it, budget-wise, of doing it all at once. And if we're just sort of on the margin, we're gonna try to cut out a piece of it for a later phase, so that if bids come in really well, really well, we can do it all at once, but it gives us the option to shed some of the project, and do that at a later time.
That's always the hope, that the bids come in enough over a phase. Will that come back through, then, the CIP, or is that already budgeted?
It's the second phase, if that happens, or the whole?
The whole thing.
The whole thing is in the city's adopted one-year budget.
Okay.
So, once we go, the next trip, we would look to have, we don't need city council approval to advertise the project, so the next trip would be to council for a word of the construction contract.
Okay, thank you much. Any questions?
I want to just add to what he was saying, because I think you brought up a good comment. Suzanne and Brittany may not be aware, but you are also, as planning commissioners, you sit on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the city. So, you do have a role, and it's an important role, because we do put together project lists, and we do have a Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, which is coordinated with the rest of the county. And the projects that he's referring to today, that are being done in the L-section, are on our project list. So, these are projects that the advisory committee has already identified as necessary, and they're basically designating bike routes through the L-section, so they're signed and they're street markings. But, prior to, basically, we have a year to come up with and modify our project list. It's kind of nice that we've actually ticked off a bunch of projects on our project list, and so, we will be coming to the advisory committee with some both questions about what you'd like to see, as well as some recommendations on what we think is necessary for Bike and Pedestrian. So, start looking for that. That's probably gonna be next year, because it's gotta be by September that we'll be submitting those, that updated project list to the county, so, you know...
So, that's basically, but we get to, we have to do a once-a-year update of the pedestrian and bicycle plan?
Not once a year, but occasionally, yeah.
Occasionally?
Yeah.
Okay, so, does that come forward first with all the list of the projects, or does it come together with the CIP, the capital improvement?
They're two separate things.
Right.
Yeah. So, it will, our, I think our Bike and Pedestrian is gonna come after this five-year CIP that they're putting. Like Craig said, this is a road preservation, pavement preservation thing, we're looking at projects. So, any roadway, he said, I don't believe he said there's widening or anything, so, there wouldn't be new facilities, except for class three-type facilities, which would be bike routes. But, there's a whole number of other projects that we can be talking about, and I'm sure you have a long list of...
Wouldn't we want to review that plan, first of all, with the list, before we go into prioritizing?
I'm not, which plan?
The pedestrian and bicycle plan?
Before we go into prioritizing?
Prioritizing the projects based on the capital improvement? So, the two are separate?
Right.
But, we need to make sure we understand the scope with the pedestrian and bicycle plan, the scope of projects?
I think what's in, what you're gonna see in the five-year CIP is not gonna have any interference, or it's not gonna affect anything that's in the current Bike and Pedestrian Plan in an adverse way. It may not be implementing some of the projects.
Right, well, that's always the trade-off.
Right, well, right. I'm not sure if I captured your question quite right, but...
So, the question really was, is whether or not we get to do any updates to the pedestrian and bicycle plan?
Which we will...
Before we get to the...
No, no, that will be happening after the CIP is adopted.
Which then, would be five years till we get to the next CIP? No.
How often do you create the CIP?
Every year.
Every year?
What, yeah, we're trying to get into the routine of having the five-year CIP come before council in December, January, then informs the annual budget process, because it just keeps shifting over, and we had a year.
So, you're saying, come first to the planning commission, and that would give us the overview, and then, it would be any recommendations to the council?
Correct.
Great, okay. Okay, thank you. I mean, it's just good, I'm glad it's coming before the, we're getting to see it, because it's a challenging area, how to do the pedestrian and bicycle, and, you know, it is trying to raise the bar. I mean, it's just, it's a, it's a big national sort of issue. So, the new transport bill as well, has got a lot of potential funding for pedestrian and bicycle improvements in it. It'd be two or three years, I guess, before there's grants available. That's what I heard, so...
I have a question about the citywide capital improvement program. What was the timing on that, that it would come to the commission? I think that was the second item you mentioned.
Correct, yeah, it's gonna lag the five-year street preservation CIP by a month, so...
Okay.
We're planning on coming before you in October, then, November with the citywide CIP. And then, the parks master plan is at this, along the same schedule.
And since this is the first time I'll be participating in that conversation, how does that take place? Do we have a workshop beforehand, or is there communication that's ongoing, or is it one meeting where we'll come together and discuss it and make decisions?
It's the one meeting.
Okay.
And the primary, the action item is to, to find conformance with the general plan, so...
I see, okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Well, thank you very much. I bring this planning commission to a close at 8:45. I guess we covered a lot. Thank you very much.